Board of Commissions, I call this meeting to order at 1:14 PM. This is a regularly monthly meeting of the District of Columbia Housing Authority being held today, April the 13th, 2022. The meeting is being held via WebEx and video conferencing. The time again is now 1:14 PM. If you are speaking, please ensure that you place your devices. If you are not speaking, excuse me, please ensure that you place your devices on mute. I would like to ask for a moment of silence at this moment. Thank you. Today's agenda is our regular agenda. We have invited members of the public to sign up and speak via website. For those who would like to just speak when the meeting, you could do so by actually videoing this and viewing this on the DC website, DCHA website, or our Facebook Live link. I am going to remind everyone that this is a virtual meeting, and I'm asking you to show your respective decorum. Please do not make loud outbursts. Please do not use profanity or any other obscene language. If you do so, you will not be able to join the meeting for one month. Thank you all again. Welcome you to our meeting for the month of April. We can proceed.
I'll do a roll call, go to a roll call to determine a quorum of commissioners, a commissioner council. Commissioner Councilor, Commissioner Valcheckio.
Here, present.
Thank you. Commissioner Hoffman.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Lee.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Ortiz Gao. Commissioner Ortiz, are you there? Commissioners, oh, there you are. Thank you. Commissioner Skinner.
Yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner Slover.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Strickland.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Parker.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Van Gossery. Commissioner Van Gossery. Yes, she's here. Thank you. And Madam Chair, Bessie Reader.
Yes, President.
Is Commissioner Council on the line again one more time? Madam Chair, you have 10 commissioners present. You have a quorum.
Thank you. I want to be mindful to our audience and guests. We have quite a few resolutions today. So I'm going to ask that during the public testimony that you guys adhere to the time, because the time limits that we place for. Now, we're going to the approval of the minutes. Listeners, do you guys have any changes or questions for minutes as written?
I am moved to prove the minutes as written.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Right, seven minutes have been approved. We're going to turn it over now to our executive director for the director's report.
Madam Chair, I want to suggest, since there are so many resolutions before the board, and we have a number of witnesses, and I know a couple of commissioners have to leave early, that we go forward with the resolutions and public comment, and that then I do my report right before the general public comment.
Thank you for that. Let's move forward. Alithia.
So we have three residents that have signed up to comment on the resolutions. They have five minutes each. The first person that signed up for Resolution 25 and 20, I'm sorry, 2215 and 2216 is Paulette Matthews. Is Ms. Paulette Matthews on the line?
Okay, I'll go ahead and move on. Ms. Detrice Belt to comment on 2215, 2216?
Yes.
Is this Ms. Belt?
Yes.
Okay, please, you have five minutes.
I'm Detrice Belt, and I'm the Chair of the Berry Farms Tenants and Allies. I'm a former resident of Berry Farms, and I want to know, when will I return? Hopefully, you can all hear me. That's my only question for the resolution. I just want to know, when will I be able to return to the property of Berry Farms? Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to address her question or move on?
Brenda, do you want to take a? Yeah.
This is Brenda Donald, Executive Director. We do have resolutions before the board today that will allow us to move forward with construction of the senior building. I'm not sure if you qualify for the senior building. And if the board approves those resolutions today, and we can move forward and close in June, we would expect to have that building completed in 18 to 24 months. So that would be the first building, and those residents would be able to come back to that. And then we would be moving on the other phases over the, you know, in the next year.
Okay, next, we have Ms. Patricia Bishop, who would like to speak on Resolution 2212, 2213, and 2214. Ms. Bishop, are you there?
Hello, everyone. Yes, I'm here.
Thank you.
On the repairs in the vacant units, could I have some more information of what time and date that y'all are talking about that? I'm getting it done. And where I'd be able to still move my tenants that are living in these bad conditions apartments into those also.
Yes, Ms. Bishop, we'll still be working with you to move people who are in units that are in subpar condition or uninhabitable to other units on the property, just as we've already started that process. The make ready is a continuation of work that we are already doing. This gives us additional contractors so that we can do more and can do faster, and that is across the whole portfolio.
Okay, thank you. And the next resolution, the mold test, would this be professional people doing the mold tests? Because years ago, we had someone coming to everybody's unit, and they did a mold test, but we have not received those results. And could I, now that I'm president, may I be entitled to have that record also, so I could continue to do what's best for my tenants?
Yes, ma'am. We, these will be professional contractors who will be doing the mold testing. And I think that is a great idea, and we'll make the commitment that we will give reports to the Resident Council Presidents about the conditions on their properties.
Okay, and the last resolution of fiscal year finance, I would like to just be informed more about that and how that's going to be done in a time they matter.
Okay, Ms. Bishop, which one was that?
Okay, that was resolution of, sorry, wrote it down. I didn't even write the resolution. It's about the rent supplement program. Okay, I apologize.
2214.
Yes, that is the one where we provide local rent subsidies to new developments that are new affordable housing developments that have been awarded through the Housing Production Trust Fund. And so we allocate certain number of vouchers to those units as part of the overall affordability mix. So there are a number of projects that Department of Housing and Community Development has selected through its competitive process. And that information should be listed in the resolution, the specific projects and the number of units that will vote. That's what that resolution is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bishop. I do see Ms. Matthews is on the line. Ms. Matthews, you want to make your comments on Resolution 2215 and 2216? You can unmute yourself by hitting star 69, I believe, if you're having trouble unmuting. Okay, Madam Chair, I don't have a response from Ms. Matthews, but that was it for. Okay, there she is. Go ahead, Ms. Matthews. You can make your statements about the resolutions. You have five minutes.
Okay, thank you so much. I kept trying to get through, so I'm just thankful to be able to get through. Hello, how everybody doing? My name is Paulette Matthews. I'm a former resident of, oh, boy, Berry Farms, also now living in Lejroy Park, also the Vice President of the Berry Farms Tenants and Allies Association. I have a lot of concerns, but I'm going to try to stay focused today. So what I would like to ask is a couple of questions. If what else is needed to happen for Phase One to be completed? It's one of my questions and concerns. How will the residents be involved in the future phases? That's the second question. And I heard Detrice asks about the return process, and I heard the response, which really doesn't give you nothing. Seeing as though all the times and all the meetings that we went to to get to this place and space, you would have thought that it would already be some type of guideline, time factors, and I get it, Corona and all of that. But, and we got thrown off a little bit, but people were still working and working at home. So the information that we get, or rather, the response that we get, it's not really nothing. After all, we were told plenty of times that there was money provided, and it was going to be done. And, and we thought, and anyway, I thought, let me talk about I, that it would be a project where it's though when you come in to do the work, all sum the road, then maybe eat in, then for sterling, you know, that type of order, not waiting for like one building to get up, and whether you qualify or you have the age to be able to come back a little faster because you fit in the criterias of being able to return to the senior building. That's not what we thought. And we spoke of these matters all the time. And what needs to happen for this whole redevelopment to be done? And when will y'all ever come to a conclusion or have the permits or HUD or wherever y'all get this from? Because the history has been the history, and things should be getting better now and not worse. And then we go from deplorable to deplorable. Then we go to unsafe units and all of that. And then I have another statement just on me. I, they came and they did a mold thing also here, once I moved here as well. The first thing I received it. Then they came out and did a second one where they were doing windows and stuff like that. So I don't understand neither one of the two. I don't know if that should have been a concern of mine because they were sent back out to here to do so, and I never got a copy. So if it's possible, all the places that y'all have done this testing, not just for people who are presidents, but even for the residents themselves, because a lot of people don't attend meetings as they should due to whatever reasons. They should know what's going on with any test that's performed and the results at the end of the day. So hopefully, somebody can answer my questions. I don't know who, but I would appreciate that someone will. Please and thank you.
Andre, if you would just give a quick kind of summary of the timeline of what will happen after we close, hopefully in June. And Ms. Matthews wants to know what kind of the timeline and what's going to happen. I know in terms of your other questions, we can follow up. We do have, of course, the team that works on mobility and return.
Excuse me, I'm not trying to be rude, and I'm not trying to be bald at the same time. But we've been hearing this for a long time, and that get back to you stuff, it doesn't necessarily happen. And another thing that I would like to suggest, when y'all say that y'all going to get back with us, just like you would have this monthly meeting all the time, when you get back with us, maybe by that time, y'all should have, you know, our concerns and address them before y'all move on to the resolution of the day. Just maybe.
Thank you. Andre, real quick.
So quickly, Berry Farms is going to be redeveloped in phases. The first building is going to be the senior building. The mayor has put approximately $48 million in her budget to support the next building, which is Building 1A, which is going to have family units in it as well, 39 replacement units, as well as 28 of that, a million of that money to support the roads that will support Building 2, as well as the townhouses. So our district partners are very involved. They're putting money in place to help move this project forward so that we can have an additional closing for the next building next year, as well as the senior building this year, and continue to move with the first phase to bring more units in that first phase of redevelopment at Berry Farms.
Andre, let me say this. This Commissioner Van Gossery and no disrespect to cheer, nobody else, but you know, I'm not running again. I enjoyed my 17 years, and I was still be in the industry. I'll be main to them, the board. I live among the constituents I serve. Now, let's get back to Berry Farms. Here's the problem. First of all, Paulette, Mia is a good community engagement person. My problem is with DCHA, and it really is. And it's for the communication part. And as a national person, and all the commissioner attended the Resident Service Resident Initiative Committee meeting, then you don't realize this about me. I didn't know Jack Kemp, but when it comes to Jimmy Kemp, and I wasn't trained by Kimmy Gray. Google who I was trained by Mildred Haley out of Boston, Massachusetts. Now I live in Washington, DC. Now, let me say this, and I mean this. Don't let no other family community go under any rad or anything else. And if you live in deplorable conditions, I am asking you and begging you during Ramadan, pay your money to the court before you lose that right. You lost the right in Berry Farms. Now, here's my problem, even today, vote with Berry Farms. You have a good community engagement person. She came out of the Pizza Harlots, and I backed that. Now, let's don't play games. And the game is this, Ronald and Jahar. I don't play with Ronald, and I don't play with Jahar. I bring both of them to table with me. They don't have another choice, but I respect both of them and who they are. Now, right now, with Berry Farms, here's the problem. You, DCHA been paying storage fee for people for how many years? And when you go back to Berry Farms, you can't even go back to the unit that you thought you was going to go in because of the downsizing. I just came back from Vegas. My director told me I couldn't even go because I'm an outgoing commissioner, not knowing the HUD rights. Understand HUD until HUD and Adrian. I'm not playing with Adrian either. Adrian got to create academy for residents. They have to be set up just like Narrois, Clapham, and Narrois to teach the Paulett's and all of us how to come to a table and negotiate with you. You want to negotiate with you? We don't know your language. We're baby boomers. We read the same books that we read. Obama and Michelle ain't got nothing on us. We've been trained by the same organizers that trained them. You're in the nation's capital. There's Ramadan. Stalked tenants are tired of being screwed. Brenda Donald, it's up to you and your one year and several months. To create an academy for residents. Thank you, my sister. I appreciate that, but I would like for them to all continue to answer my questions. We're not stupid. We have college degree.
The resident is asking for her question.
I'm sorry, I think that Andre did respond to the questions, Madam Chair. So that will be the last.
You got to set up an academy for us.
Excuse me, Commissioner. Madam Chair, that's the last public witness. So if you want to move forward with the resolutions.
Yes, we're going to move forward.
You know your management skills.
Hello? We're not, we're not up on that portion yet. These were resolution comments.
We, I think we finished the last.
No, ma'am. No, ma'am. No, ma'am. Ma'am, we did.
Ms. Matthews' most important question was, how are we going to be calling people back to Berry Farms? And I think she's entitled to an answer.
The answer is, I thought I said it, and she did start speaking over me, but the answer is that we have our relocation and mobility teams in the Office of Housing Choice Voucher Programs. It's an excellent team that is responsible for following up and meeting with every resident. They've stayed in touch with all of the residents who have been relocated, and I will work with them on the relocation plans. You typically do not do that years out before the building is going to be ready because that sets up false expectations. People can't plan two years ahead for moving. We can go into that process, though, as soon as we move forward, as we're able to close. But we do have a team who is responsible for doing that.
Perhaps the team could meet with the residents and tell them what their ideas are for how you decide. The residents want to be involved.
Yes, ma'am. They do meet with them.
And that was another thing. We should be involved in this, in what you're saying, what you're saying, Ms. Donaldson. I don't know if y'all can hear me, but what you're saying is actually like a script to me at this point. Because before, when I came to Berry Farms in 1999, I believe, it was already said that Berry Farms was going to be redeveloped, or someone was coming from Berry Farms. At that time, they like, they always said it was the military. You know, you say two years prior, but this was done so many years prior for this to come to play. So I feel as though it shouldn't be like, no, two years. Y'all were planning for this way before time, and we should have that same due respect to get some kind of information or at least be a part of what's going to go happen in two years opposed to you getting on the board or putting out some rules or regulations or the resolution of what's going to happen to us. We need to be a part of it, and that's where the problem is. And with all of this HUD and y'all and the rest of those that are, you know, elected, at the end of the day, we are still human beings, and we deserve that right. And we deserve not to have lived in those conditions and to have to fight back to get to better conditions and to have to wait for decisions and then still turn around and fight or go to court for them. It's just not fair. And you know, leave us out every time. And all my questions were not concerned, but I thank you, chairperson, who responded. I really don't know your name. Right now, you're probably new to the board, not new to them, but new to me because I've been outside of the rooms, and I do most of my calls actually by phone. Not that I can't do Zoom, but I don't choose to do Zoom. So I appreciate you, and I don't know your name. If you can repeat it, you will. But I would like for Ms. Donalds to please proceed, or whoever her staff member are, for my two last questions because I don't think that they were answered. And Aquarius, I appreciate you. You know I love you, my sister. Thank you.
Right. So the last two questions that you had was the process of when you want to return and the information that you need to be aware of. And what was your other question?
Just to be involved. I think we should be involved. They was telling us that, but that doesn't happen. I want y'all to know that the things do not happen that are being said. It's almost like speaking out the side of your neck. You say it, it sound effect sounds good, but it actually doesn't happen in real time. It really doesn't. And also, it was the mold situation that I spoke of and the report, not only given to presidents of, you know, of the council or whatever. I feel as though, because a lot of people don't attend those meetings, that the residents should also have it because they're living in it.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews. We're going to move forward.
I'm sorry, real quick, it's Ms. Belt. Just real quick, the lady, I just heard her say the chair, the woman that's speaking, I can't think of her name. She's new. She took over Garrett. But she, did she just say that that's not possible to Paulette? That the residents does not have any involvement? Is that what I just heard her say?
No, you didn't hear that.
No, she didn't say that. She said that they will be involved. She said that they will be involved.
They have been involved. There are multiple meetings. There are newsletters that send periodic information. As soon as we start construction, we will begin the relocation process in earnest with the relocation team.
Preparation is always good. You say as soon as we start, like we could, you could be prepping us ahead of time. You know.
Ms. Matthews, I'm going to have to, Ms. Matthews, I apologize, but we've gone over the.
Okay, we can move on because I'm all for the residents to talk as well. So I'll bring little pit stops back in to be answered of the questions that I'm asking, if need be, because I know time is very important.
I appreciate that. We're actually going to move the resolution for Berry Farms to be on the table first. Resolution 2216 to authorize a Second Amendment to a memorandum understanding for the predevelopment finance for Berry Farms redevelopment. Please proceed.
About 2215.
Yeah, 2215 and 2216, Madam Chair.
Yes, I'm sorry, 2215 first.
Alithia. If we're doing a vote now, we need a motion first and a second.
Whoa, 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 whoa. We have to have a discussion.
Discussion of, discussion on Resolution 2215.
Yeah, we're, nobody has any questions.
Yeah, I'm really in a rush.
The title of the resolution, please, and then so that everyone knows what we're talking about.
Is that Mr. Springfield?
Resolution 2215 is to authorize the execution of documents to enable a closing for financing for redevelopment of Berry Farms Building 1B.
Any discussion?
I have a question if nobody else does.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Do we have all the approvals needed from HUD?
No, Commissioner Slover, this resolution would allow us to request approvals from HUD for this particular.
A demo dispo letter was issued from HUD in 2017, I think. I have a copy of it. I read it last night. This is much different than what was articulated or what was reflected in that letter, particularly these subsidies. That letter reflects no subsidies. Clearly, that's changed. Have we updated anything to HUD since 2017?
So this resolution would give us the authority to update the disposition for just this parcel and provide the information to HUD as to the subsidies that would be provided.
Okay, because the previous one was about disposing the entire site. There was value, there were numbers. So we, we're not, we're not working off that authority. We're doing something much different.
We have to update that approval to just include this one parcel.
Yeah, it confuses me because the approval is. So we're really just going back. We're going to do it by site by site now versus the entire site.
And we've done that in the past as we go through dispositions for these multi-phase redevelopments. We go back to HUD and update the information.
I'm not trying to interrupt you. I don't want to get cut off by the chair from time perspective. I'm not trying to be rude.
No, that's right.
I'm just putting out on the table that there is this 2017 letter, and things have changed. And so we, we don't have any HUD approval for a demo dispo at this point.
The approval is for the entire site, but we do not want to dispose of the entire site, just this one parcel.
Why not dispose the whole site?
Hold on, hold on. Paulette. So in looking at the sources and uses of documents, it looks like it's about $540,000 per unit from a construction cost, and that's not including a lot of the infrastructure work, and that's not including land. That, is that a, is that a good number? Is that an industry standard number?
There's a acquisition note as part of the sources and uses that includes the cost of land value.
Yes, sir, I understand that. The $540,000 is construction costs. $586,000 includes the land. Neither of those numbers include significant infrastructure that's already taking place. So from a pure construction perspective, it's $540,000 per unit.
There are some land costs in there based on the note for.
I back those out.
Okay.
So the 540 is a pure construction cost. Does that seem high to you?
No, it doesn't.
Okay. The resolution talks about the land disposition. So how did you come to the $4.9 million? And it's a note. And it's a note, and how is that paid? How is it paid? What's the, what are the lease, what are the, because this is the biggest thing that this resolution is dispose of the land. This is the first disposition of land in the sixteen years we've been working on this thing. This is the first moment of land disposition approval by this board. So we're coming to land value. So how did you come up with the four point nine million dollars? And then how, how do we get, how do we get, how does that reflect back to us in terms of payment?
So four point nine million dollars is based on a current appraisal, um, per the agreement that we have with the developers is we're doing a, um, a new appraisal prior to, um, each, uh, financial closing. So that's based on a new, um, appraisal.
So how, how do we get paid back? I, I looked at the pro forma. Uh, I see some numbers. Could you just tell me what the terms and conditions of the actual lease are?
So we're being paid out of the waterfall of cash flow. And there are other soft loans ahead of our ground lease payment, um, that need to be paid as well as developer fee. So you can see as part of the pro forma that you receive and starting in year eight, we're started to being paid, uh, a portion of that, uh, that note.
So again, the annual payment. And how long does the lease last? And the annual payment is, forgetting with the fact we're not going to get any money, what would the payment be if we were actually not at the bottom of the waterfall?
It would, it would be.
Thirty-five thousand dollars per year?
Uh, it's approximately twenty-five percent of the available cash flow.
Okay, so in your pro forma, this is important. In your, in your pro forma, you have a rent payment. And the rent payment you reflect is thirty-four thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars per year if it's being fully paid. How long does that payment last? What is the term of the lease?
So we currently have a sixty-five year term that could be renewed on the ground lease for, um, this first phase.
So the lease term contemplated us getting paid thirty-four thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars for sixty-five years?
It depends on available cash flow. It could be more.
I. So in, in, in the first eight years, we don't get any payments. And we're not guaranteed any payments under this. We're guaranteed what's left of the cash flow at the bottom of the waterfall. In other words, everybody else gets paid before DCHA gets any money. That's what I'm seeing, Andy. I'm seeing the waterfall. What I'm saying to you is, this has always been my issue on this board, is our land value. I look at the sources and uses. I see every single dollar coming from, from, from either the government or Lytech, except for there's a nine million dollar loan, uh, that, that a guess is being guaranteed by the partner. But the revenue flow, we are at the bottom. And as we all know in these deals, very little money drops to the bottom. And so I, I think this is a validation of my concern that we are not getting any value for the land. At least in the, in the first eight years, we're not getting a dollar. Everybody else is getting paid first. That moves me on to my next question, which is why would we give them sixty-six percent of, of the deal and the cash flow? What word? I, I don't understand that. We're providing the land. We're providing the subsidies. We're subsidizing all these units. We're putting in all of the money. And they're getting sixty-six percent. It doesn't make any sense. Every time we get to this point, it's like, oh, oh, we had to do this, we had to do that. This deal is not to our benefit.
But is the deal, Commissioner Slover, is the point for DCHA to make money or to redevelop the property so that residents can live comfortably and efficiently? What is the point that we're making here?
The original deal, Chairman.
That might not happen.
Land in. We were going to put our land in on our ACC contracts. That was going to be our exposure. If you read the twenty-seventeen demo dispo, that's what we in particular, we're going to do. In the meantime, we have put in significantly more resources. We have now put in project-based vouchers, supplemental supplement value. We are subsidizing every single one of our replacement units, yet the deal doesn't change on the other side. And so, yes, we are getting replacement units, but we are now paying two or three times.
We're not paying on two or three times.
Every single time.
And we don't get money for the land we have now. So I'm still trying to understand how is that impeding the understanding of this resolution? If the goal is for us to move the residents into the new property? I think that's what we're trying to get to. So I don't, I'm just trying to understand the line of questionings that you're giving to the staff.
The goal for us is to maximize the resources we have to benefit the residents in the highest and best use of the land. We continue to add and add and add money and subsidies. And yet the bottom line doesn't change.
Excuse me, this is the quarter board. Uh, uh, there's a lot of interference going on. I cannot hear Board Member Slover.
Thank you. Could you, if you're not speaking, could you please mute your line?
The point.
Continue, uh, Commissioner Slover.
What I'm trying to make is, as I say at all these deals, when you don't know in the beginning what you are contributing to the deal, you don't know if you've ended up in a good place. And so, yes, we want these units to be replaced. Of course we do. But we never contemplated putting this many subsidies into these projects. And we can't afford to do these every single time this way. We don't have the resources. We haven't met, we haven't used our land to our value. It hasn't reduced our, our commitment to the project. It's increased. So at the end of the day, my point is we're, we're, we're not, we're not benefiting from these things. We are not maximizing the value of our subsidies, of our land and everything else.
Okay. Do you have a, do you have another question that you want to raise? Because again, we differ on that. I want to see the residents in the property, in a new property, all those residents to come back. I'm not in the business of DCHA getting wealthy off the backs of the residents. And we're trying to improve their particular.
So I would.
If you have a, if you have a specific question?
I'm, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, but to suggest that we're going to get wealthy off of this is.
More housing authorities.
The point I'm trying to make is that we are, we need to get, we need to get the most we can. We have very limited assets.
That's right.
We need to maximize every single one of those.
That's right.
Dollar that you described as us getting wealthy is actually going to be plowed back in so we can improve the lives of our residents. Every dollar we leave on the table and every dollar we let go to somebody else takes away from our ability to perform those missions. That's the point I'm trying to get to. And so.
That's right, Mr. Slaver.
And so the reality of the situation is every single.
Slover, that's what I learned. Slover.
Not benefit. The agency is not benefiting from this. We are not maximizing our assets. We are giving way too much to these deals. And it's got to stop because we cannot afford to do this time and time again. And what happens is we get to this situation and everyone says, we've been working on this for sixteen years. You can't stop this now. We have to do this. We have to do this. We have to stop and stand up for ourselves and get the best we can out of these deals for our residents. That's my point.
Thank you. On order, again, I'm going to ask if you're not speaking, if you could please mute your line. Commissioner Sl, um, Skinner?
Yes, um, you know, while I appreciate the Commissioner's concerns, uh, and we have to look at these deals on a case-by-case basis. I mean, uh, the Commissioner keeps bringing up, you know, what has happened in the past and, uh, uh, you know, we, we can't do anything now. We have to deal with where we are and how we move forward, uh, with, uh, getting the, the, uh, buildings built and getting the residents back into, uh, uh, quality housing. Uh, we can, you know, we can pick apart the, the structure, the deal and the cash flow and so forth. But I think, uh, the, the staff has, has negotiated in good faith, uh, trying to get, uh, that the best deal possible under the circumstances. We don't know all of the, the, um, uh, issues that, uh, the, our partners in the deal have, have brought up. Uh, we have tax credit investors involved. All of those things come into play in terms of how the deal eventually gets structured. Uh, we do have the land lease, uh, involved. We'll be getting money back if, if, even if it's not in the first few years. Eventually, we will be getting paid back, uh, as part of the land lease as well as the loans that are on the, on the property. Uh, and we are part of the, the cash flow, uh, that's shown as in the waterfall. So, you know, I think it, it's a reasonable deal. You know, it may not be, quote, the best deal possible, but I think it's a reasonable deal and it allows us to move forward and get the units built.
I mean, I, I, the NPD themselves said we weren't going to get paid back on that soft loan. I mean, I, I, I just fundamentally disagree with the. We're at the bottom of the waterfall. We're not going to see a dime on that lease payment.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments regarding this particular resolution before we move forward?
Chair, I'm going to make a motion for the, uh, approval of the resolution. Motion for both.
Second.
Resolution twenty-two fifteen we're talking about, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. There's a motion and seconded. Um, Commissioner Council?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Fauchekio?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Hoffman? Commissioner Hoffman?
You're muted.
No.
Thank you. Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Ortiz Gao? Thank you. Commissioner Skinner?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Slover?
No.
Thank you. Commissioner Strickland?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Parker?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Van Gasteri? Commissioner Van Gasteri there? Uh, Madam Chair, Bussie Reader?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam Chair, you have eight yes, two no. Resolution twenty-two fifteen is approved.
Thank you. We're moving directly into resolution twenty-two sixteen. Brenda, would you please provide the background for?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Bonds. Will you read the resolution?
Yes, this is resolution twenty-two sixteen to authorize a second amendment to memorandum of understanding predevelopment financing for Berry Farm redevelopment.
Any discussion? Commissioner Hoffman, do you have? Any discussion?
I'd like to make a point.
Please, please, Commissioner.
Can you, can you explain for the record what happened to the A and R, the other partner? I, I never actually figured out what happened to them and whether, how they were allowed to exit the deal. If they're referenced in these resolutions, that's why I ask.
Um, who can answer that question?
I, I'll take that question. Um, A and R, uh, originally, when we did the, uh, selection of a developer, uh, for this, uh, uh, project, um, they were part of the development team. However, um, they have, um, um, exited as a development partner and POA. The co-development partner, um, is now, uh, the lead developer as, uh, part of the redevelopment for Berry Farm.
So it's my recollection that A and R was the lead developer and dropped out. And so they're the ones who won the RFP. So that, that was allowed under the, they can just walk away?
Both POA and A and R were procured under the, uh, RFP.
I'd just like to get a legal ruling from the General Counsel that they were late, they were allowed to leave. So that would be, uh, obviously not relevant to this, but that'd be great if we could figure that out. Um, so in two thousand sixteen, seventeen, even though I appreciate the NPD's money, um, you know, I voted against those resolutions to take those, I mean, because ultimately, it's my belief that in these deals, these dollars slow the deal down. And they're, they're participatory in slowing these deals down because the developer is able to pay themselves, uh, to hold on to the land. And then they basically, as I was trying to articulate before, we end up contributing more and more and more into these deals to get them done because they take longer and longer and longer to do. And so by adding three point seven million dollars to Building One A, we're reducing the pressure on the developer to go out and find the money and get this deal moving faster. It's a, it's a, it's actually, I think, achieving the opposite of what we're trying to. So therefore, I, I can't, once again, I will not be able to, uh, approve these dollars because I don't think they're helping the project. I think they slow it down.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments, Commissioners?
Um, Chair, can I make a motion to approve the resolution?
Yes, you may. Got it, a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alethea.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Fauchekio?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Council?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Hoffman? Commissioner Hoffman?
No.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Ortiz Gao? Commissioner Ortiz, are you there?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Skinner?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Slover?
No.
Thank you. Commissioner Strickland?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Van Gasteri? Commissioner Van Gasteri there? Okay. Commissioner Parker?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Madam Chair, Bussie Reader?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam Chair, you have eight yes, two no. The resolution is approved, twenty-two sixteen.
Thank you. We will proceed with going back to resolution twenty-two twelve.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, Ms. Bond, will you read that resolution, please, the title?
Yes, Director. This is resolution twenty-two twelve to authorize the execution of contracts for vacant unit repair make-ready services, as amended, um, earlier by the Commissioners.
Do I have any questions or comments regarding this resolution from the Commissioners?
I got a quick question.
Please.
We have a, this, there's been ongoing work in this arena for a while. Who's been doing that work? And why do we need a new contract if the work's already going on?
Um, Victor, are you still with us to answer that? Yes, great. Introduce yourself.
You're muted.
Thank you. Sorry. Hi, everyone. Victor Martinez, Deputy Executive Director. Uh, the reason why we're using, uh, we're using multiple vendors is, uh, I don't know if you remember my previous presentation about the turnaround strategy. We have different strata of units and work that needs to be done. Some of it, um, less complex, some more complex. We need different skills in order to move ahead and be able to do the work, uh, quickly. Not only that, um, we have a very big backlog of units. I visited them myself. Uh, we have a team that have, have gone and visited and performed, uh, a very detailed inspection of these units. And, uh, the amount of work that we have to do that needs to be done uh, requires all the, all hands on deck and all the help that we can get in order to be able to turn these units quickly and be able to start moving tenants in, into these units. Including also, and included within the plan is also right sizing, finding ways to be able to move tenants to the right size units. Uh, we're looking at this holistically, um, also in order to transfer tenants around. But like we said, like I just said, uh, we just want to do this quickly and efficiently.
So the, the people, the people we currently have procured are, are, are unable to, to perform this volume of work?
No, it's it's just different. So we divided the whole gamut of of units that we need to do from zero percent to a hundred percent, how much work needs to be done. Some of it is more complex, some of it is easier. So we're trying, we're trying in order to work in parallel all these different swim lanes to be able to complete and reach our goals. So we have in-house staff doing a certain strata and we have different vendors with special skills taking care of different, different types of of work that we currently have there.
I'm not asking my question very effectively. We procured a bench of vendors a couple of years ago that we went through this entire process with, were able, who I think have been doing a lot of this work prior to now. What I'm trying to find out is, are there, are those vendors not sufficient enough? And that's why we need more.
Commissioner, come on. Go ahead, Kimberly.
Those contracts expired in twenty twenty one.
So we can't just add on to them? We need to reprocure?
That's correct.
Thank you, Kimberly. Commissioner, I'm sorry. You had another question, Commissioner Slover?
Just want to make sure that these renovations have thought through in terms of our long-term plans in terms of repositioning.
Thank you. Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes, um, at the last board meeting, Director Donald, we asked how many redone units have been leased and you said you would get that to us before today. We don't have that yet. Do you know how many of the redone units have been leased up?
Victor, do you have an update? You're on mute if you're talking to us.
Sorry, again. Yes, Commissioner Hoffman, I have a I have an update for you. So basically, since last month, we've we've been performing, as I mentioned, reconciliations between what we are seeing the reality out there in the field versus YARDI, which is our manager, our system that used to manage our properties. We've been working on setting up reporting structures so that the information flows from just a few people that are performing the inspections over to the the person, one or two people who are just going to be updating everything in YARDI or into HUD. These these inspections have been, and this reconciliation has been very valuable for for in order for us to be able to piece everything together and be able to send notices and 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 instructions out to the field on what the priorities are. From the last time that that we reported, we had about a hundred and forty units that were vacant and ready to move people in. These units maybe are may may be used to move in new new tenants or maybe used to transfer tenants around. Currently, we are, we have about two hundred and fifty. We've gone up to to about two hundred and fifty vacant ready units. The trends that we're seeing are very, feel very optimistic that we're heading in the right direction. Having said that, that's one side of the coin. The second side of the coin that we were working on was on leasing and admissions. So on that end, we are, part of the plan was, we need to, we're hiring five new staff members and we're consolidating and transferring the work that was being done before centrally by E C O D over to property management. That way, we're going to be having everything under property management from the waitlist, leasing and admissions in order for us to be more efficient and close the loop within the property management side. The last numbers that I can report in the last month or so, we we called four hundred candidates. Candidates that were from the waitlist of those four hundred in the past month, only twenty seven responded. Six were deemed eligible and as of last week, only one moved in. What we're doing to improve these numbers is we're starting to reach out to additional candidates. We have a series of plans tied to that to be able to reach out to all our waitlist tenants and be able to efficiently start moving them in now that we have more options available.
They were first supposed to go to people who are living in substandard conditions. Is that happening?
Yes, ma'am. In fact, just last week, we had twenty twenty-two of those transfers. The number, the two hundred and fifty number that I gave you was supposed to be larger, but we started to move some tenants over to these renovated units so that we can start moving them to a better-conditioned unit.
How many of them are moved in?
Well, like I said, last week, there was a, there was a group of twenty-two. That's the only thing that I have at the moment. I can tell you everything that's been transferred, all the all the transfers. I don't have the exact number with me.
Maybe. Been transferred on paper? Have they been transferred in life? Are they living in the new units?
Ma'am, I was informed that as of last week, twenty-two yes have been transferred.
Any other questions, Commissioner Hoffman?
We were supposed to be getting reports on this regularly. Will you start reporting to us monthly? How many apartments have been remade? And who's moved into them, whether from the waitlist or from the very badly unhealthy, unsafe units they're now living in?
Ma'am, I could, I have the information. I can provide it to you. The thing is.
Regular date each month when we'll be providing that information when you finalize the dashboard. So we will be able to send them information at the end of April, probably like if we say by the tenth of the following month, and then we can have the current month. We get to the end of the month, reconcile the data and then send it by the tenth of the month, the following month. Is that?
And what is the sequence of selection? How do you decide whether it's somebody who's living in squalid conditions or somebody from the waitlist or somebody who's been waiting for a disabled, an accommodation unit? There are all kinds of people who are waiting for these units. How do you decide the sequence?
Okay, so part of the reason why we're moving ahead faster to have more units online is to have options. Not everyone likes the the options that they have. So as we expand the options, we're having more people decide that they want to move in. That is, that is, all of them are are working, we're all working in parallel, even fixing and trying to consolidate all our efforts to transfer tenants around and maintaining a centralized waitlist and transfer list. So they're all being taken into account based on different hierarchies of importance from security to units that have been deemed that need to be, we need to redo and have them provide the tenants the option to move.
What is the sequence? What is the order?
Well, the order, I would have to get back to you on that unless, Nona, you have the order with you in front of you.
Good afternoon. No, I don't have the order in front of us, in front of me, but I will say the following. Commissioner Hoffman, what happens is that as we look at the preferences that families have, so many of the families on the transfer list have preferences in different quadrants. If we're unable to meet that, then we move to what's on the ADA list for those families to see if we have availability there. And then we move to those that's for admissions.
So there is a sequence. It's people who want to move, who who are in bad apartments and then people who have need for accommodation and then the waitlist.
We do, we look at what's available and then we go from there, trying to reduce occupancy, trying to reduce our vacancy rate. So we do look at those, look at different preferences, bedroom sizes and needs of the families.
And do you, nobody talks to anybody until you decide, right?
What we look at, so we have lists available. And so like, for example, our ADA, our transfer list. So in that transfer list, families, if they say that they want to live in Northwest, then we look to see what is available at Northwest and then we provide options to them. And so if we have somebody that's sitting in, that's in a unit that has the conditions of the unit are not the best, we look at opportunities, transfer them on site to keep them in a neighborhood that they're more familiar with. If not, then we look at other options, other properties that's available. And then families that's coming out the waitlist is what's available that meets their bedroom size.
The ADA accommodation list is pretty old too, as well as the waitlist is. Do you contact people to update their information so you can find them?
No, ma'am, we have not been doing that. One of the things that I've that.
Nona, let me interrupt. This is Rachel Joseph, the Chief Operating Officer, ADA, reports to me. And we have, in fact, sent a letter to everyone on that waitlist. We did it earlier this fall to let them know that they remain on that waitlist and that we are, we continue to look for units that meet their accommodation needs.
Did they all get the letters, do you know?
I I don't know that, Commissioner, but with this movement on occupancy, we are trying to match people up and we are having conversations about how to look at the data from that waitlist and move people more quickly.
The director at the last meeting or the meeting before said there was going to be a big publicity thing with PSAs and stuff so that people would know that that start looking. Start thinking about it. Are we doing that?
That's a different issue. I'll let the director speak. That's not the ADA waitlist.
Let me interject, if I may. So Commissioner Hoffman, not to interrupt you, but are your questions relating to this particular resolution or are you asking for an update? Because this, the make-ready units, I mean, the line that you're going down, I think that's a little different than where we are with the resolution. So you can ask this final question and then I'm going to entertain any additional questions from any other Commissioners.
Yes, we are moving forward with the campaign. The script has been written. The stations and the media have been identified and that is only one part of updating the waiting list. We're also looking at some other strategies, some of which we discussed with you and that you even recommended, Commissioner Hoffman. That is part of that plan and that is moving forward. So now I'll just remind the board that what we have in front of you is the resolution to give us additional resources, contractors, so that we can do more make-ready units. We know that the need is great in on all of these categories. So that's our goal, our priority, to fix up as many units and to match people and get them moved in. It's all part of that larger strategy.
Thank you, Brenda. Do we have any other questions on resolution twenty two twelve? Commissioners? Entertaining motion?
Motion.
Make motion to approve resolution twenty two twelve.
And did I hear you second that?
Second.
All right, Alethea.
Thank you. Commissioner Skinner.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Slover.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Strickland.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Parker.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Van Gossary. Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Fauchakio.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Council.
Yes.
Thank you. Madam Chair Bussie Reader.
Yes.
Thank you. You have nine yes. The resolution twenty two twelve is approved.
Wow, I think that's the first time in a year that we all agreed on one resolution. All right. Good job.
You gotta get busy.
Yes, yes. You guys have a lot of work to do. Let's move on to resolution twenty two thirteen.
Okay. Ms. Bonds?
Yes, resolution twenty two thirteen is to authorize the execution of contracts for mold testing and remediation services. Any questions or comments from Commissioners on this resolution?
I have, go ahead, Commissioner Hoffman, if you want to go first.
Yeah, my my question is, can we get on the public record? A, that we will provide copies of the reports on the conditions in the apartments to the resident council presidents? And B, that we will provide them to the resident in that unit?
Yes, I will commit to doing both. Providing copies of any lead assessment reports in congregate to the resident council presidents and certainly to the individuals in the unit.
And I would say to all the condition reports that are being developed through your unit-by-unit review.
Yes.
Thank you.
Unless somebody else, I can go. I'm gonna ask the same question from before, which is this work has been, we've had this work, type of work going on for quite some time. Who's been doing that work to date? Are any of these contractors, those contractors, why, why do we need this contract now?
Kimberly?
Again, those contracts have expired.
When did they expire?
The mold contracts expired in twenty twenty, the end of twenty twenty.
So we've been operating for two years under significant mold problem without any contracts?
No, the 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 umbrella contracts, as I said, expired in twenty twenty one. They have on an individual basis, case-by-case basis, awarded work for individual units as necessary.
So the next question would be, why did it take so long to bring this? I mean, it seems like a very critical piece of work we need to have access to. Wouldn't that significantly slow things down to have to do things on a case-by-case basis like that? It would just seem that something had dropped here.
Good question. I do not know the answer to that. Kimberly or Lori, do you know the answer or is that on the program side?
It's on the program side.
I think at the time, Lori Bonds, General Counsel, I think at the time, not only was the delay with regard to the program side, but also because of COVID. And we're reducing the number of staff as well as contractors that could be able to enter the unit. Unless there were situations that were, again, dire and required, again, us to have the testing and the remediation services, which, as Kimberly said, then the operations were contacting the contractors on a case-by-case basis as opposed to having a plan as they are now to go into several units at one time.
So is this a specialty service or just a general service that a lot of contractors provide?
No, these are specialty services. They have to be on a list that the district approves to have testing, knowledge and expertise and separate contractors that can do remediation.
Because I see that two of the four awardees were also awarded contracts under the previous resolution.
That's.
They have the specific expertise to do this?
That's correct. So you have two of the awardees that have the certification for remediation. One of the awardees has the certification for assessment. And then one of the awardees has both the assessment and remediation certification.
No, I was just referring to the fact that two of them were on the previous resolution for general services. So where do you guys? Where do you guys find, how do you solicit for these vendors? Because I always wonder that myself. I've asked these questions a lot, just where do we put out, do we add, we put ads out? We go to various places? Because I always want to make sure we're casting a wide enough net.
So the solicitations are published in the standard media that are listed in the resolution. In addition to that, we are posting the solicitations to the D C H A website, which in fact gets sent to all of the registered bidders. We send the solicitation directly to D H C D to distribute to the C B E and Section Three businesses. And we send it as well to, directly to you know, the number of companies that are identified by the program office.
Okay, so could you guys update these resolutions? Because you list the Current Newspaper as one of the places where you put these advertisements. They've been out of business since May of twenty nineteen.
I have to check the list and verify. Um, I know that we do have a standard list that we send the solicitations to, but I will definitely go through and double-check to make sure that that is not, you know, a typo and that the correct medias are listed within the resolution.
Yeah, because it says DCH advertised in these various periodicals, one of which doesn't exist.
And Commissioner Slover, you're referencing the memo, not the resolution, correct? Because that's not in the resolution.
I'm referencing the memo, and yeah, I just, I'm trying to make sure that we're actually advertising somewhere.
Noted.
Yes, we are. And, and again, for these, this particular services, again, they have to be derived directly from the district's list. So even with advertising, this is not one where we can cast a wide net. Um, we actually have to contact the actual companies that have been approved by the district. So it's not as if we can even be able to reach out, uh, to companies anywhere else. There can be companies that are from other areas, but they have to be approved by the district for these particular services.
I want, the previous one has the current as well, so we could just make that change. It would be, it would be great. Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Council, Commissioner Council?
Question, within doing the procurement part and because of COVID, did we stop our services? Because you're saying that it expired at 2020, and this is 22. So did we stop the services because of COVID? And then we reissued an RFP for the services again?
Commissioner Council, they, again, um, operations didn't stop their services. They just did them on a case-by-case basis. So instead of us having a bench of contractors to be able to do the work in multiple units, it was that they were contacting contractors just one at a time for individual isolated units. So that we have been continuing to have contractors come in to do testing and remediation services. Throughout, it was just at a much smaller rate, smaller scale, uh, during COVID.
Okay, now I hear you saying because of COVID, but this is 22. Ms. Allen is saying the contracts expired in 2020. So how did we drop or lax within sending in a RFP to keep it rolling? We're now getting ready to go into another contract. So I'm trying to get, there's a lapse, 2020, 22, there's a lapse. So that's my question. How did we do this?
Again, to your point, there was a lapse. The contracts expired.
Thank you. Okay, got you. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have any other questions from the Commissioners? If hearing none, can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, Alethea?
You, um, Commissioner Strickland?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Parker?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Van Gasteri? Commissioner Slover?
Yes.
Commissioner Skinner?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Fauchekio?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Council? Was that a yes, Commissioner Council? Thank you. Uh, and Madam Chair, Bessie Reader?
Yes.
Thank you. You have nine. Yes, uh, Resolution 2213 is approved.
We're gonna roll today. All right, thank you. Let's move forward. Um, now we're going to Resolution 2214.
Yes, Commissioners, Resolution 2214 is to approve the allocation of fiscal year 2022 Local Rent Supplement Program awarded projects to support the creation of affordable housing in the District of Columbia. Any questions or comments from the Commissioners?
I have a question unless someone else does.
Please, go right, go, move forward.
Uh, so I just want to put a couple of things on the record and then ask a few questions. Um, so every year this, this resolution comes up, and I want to put on the record that DCHA has nothing to do with the, um, process to pick the recipients of these subsidies. They're not part of that selection process. Correct?
I'm sorry, repeat your question. Can we access all of our guests' mutual lines, please? Could you repeat your question, Commissioner?
Well, I just want to put on the record that DCHA, uh, does not have anything to do with the selection process of recipients for these subsidies.
Correct.
And that these funds are coming from the city, and as such, um, in accordance with the resolution, DCHA's responsibility with regards to this are administering the Local Rent Supplement Program project-based subsidies in accordance with statutory and regulatory requirements. And the resolution goes on to say, "All awards are subject to final review by DCHA to ensure compliance with DCHA's administrative plan." According to the materials also provided to the board, the administrative plan calls for having DCHA staff work with the selected housing providers to ensure rent reasonableness assumptions for each project. Correct so far?
Yes. Lori, that's correct, right? Or Andrea?
As, as the term implies, rent reasonableness is a process by which DCHA determines the appropriate rental payments for each unit. Right?
Yes.
That is correct.
So the, basically what this kind, so our, our role on this is to make sure that the landlord is charging the appropriate rent for the unit. So my question is, as articulated in the resolution, or as presented in the resolution, there are rent payments for each one of the units. Who picked, who created the rents for those 145 units? And when, when, when were they, when were they set?
So that was a, a process that is managed through our HCBP program, and those rents would have, I'm not sure the timing of when they're determined is part of the deal, but that is the, the normal process that we would go through with our Housing Choice Voucher team using our current rent standard.
So the rent, so, uh, the question is, did DCHA set these rents, or did, were these rents? Because it's unclear from the resolution. It says that we need to then go validate
Right.
At some point. So the question is, who set this rent?
Right. Ms. Myers?
Yes, I would really have to first, Erin, because I know I wasn't a part of the deal when it first started. Erin, when they created the deal, did you get the rents confirmed by, um, DCHA? I know she's on mute now.
Yeah, sorry. Hi, this is Sega, the Kelly from, uh, DHCD. Yeah, that, when projects apply in our consolidated RFP, they use the submarket rents that are published on the DCHA website. And then after they're selected and before they go to council, they work with DCHA staff to, um, refine those rents, and DCHA comes up with the final number before the council, um, resolution.
So they went, they being the developer, went to DCHA's website and used our current rent standards to create these rents?
Yeah.
Now, I think we're all aware that our current rent standards have some, um, some issues that we've been working through or trying to work through. And so part of my concern is that these rents are too, are, are, are not just, they're, they're using a, a process that doesn't work. That in 2019, we started an internal process, which resulted in a memo in 2021 that, that listed five corrective actions to make sure that our rent reasonableness process was appropriate. And we haven't done any of those. And so it's pretty well-known in the marketplace that our rents are higher than, than the market. And so I, I, I just want to understand why we would approve these rents without some ability to apply the rent reasonableness process that we are going to soon come up with.
Right. So these rents were all determined some years ago, or within, as, as these projects were being put together. So we have to use the standard that we currently operate under, just as we do every day when we're doing half-contracts for individual landlords. Until we change it, it is the standard that we use that this board has approved that allows the agency to go up to 187% of fair market rate, depending on the submarkets. That is something that the previous administration and this board approved. We have not changed it yet, as you well know, and I've pointed out multiple times, we are to come back to this board through a committee on May 5th with our recommendations, our findings and recommendations. But until that gets changed, we have, we use the rent standard that, or rent standard guidelines that we currently operate on.
Director Donald, April 12th of 2021, a memo was sent to the board from the agency walking through five corrective action steps. That was over a year ago. To correct this problem, I brought this up to you when you first came on. Step number five was to bring the resolution to the board in June of 2021 to start stepping back the rent payment standards from 180, whatever, to 160%. What I'm saying is we have failed to correct this. And now we're looking at $51 million for the rent payments that were, you're asking us to approve under a process that we know is flawed.
Right. We have failed to correct it yet, as we have reported. And, um, but we operate every day, and we're, we're operating all along. So we're not going to suspend, or we shouldn't suspend rent payments that we have under which, that are determined under our current standard. I mean, we do this every day. We do it, the recertifications, we do it through new voucher clients, LRSB clients coming in the door. This is the standard, rent standard that we're currently operating under until it gets changed.
Okay, so-
These deals were negotiated using that based on the published rent standard that DCHA has that developers who are putting together affordable housing packages have to rely on. That's all they, we can do at this point. And so again, until we, until it's changed, those, this is the rent standard that's used. And I, and I do want to point out that the 187% of fair market rate is not applied across the board. That is an up to an allowance. And our initial analysis has shown that there are very, very few outliers who actually go up to that level, which is good. Again, we are coming back on May 5th, as we have committed to doing, and giving you our findings and our recommendations. But it's not fair to go back, I mean, you can't retroactively, I don't think, go back on rent standards that were in place when these developers were putting together their deals and submitted proposals that were then selected by Department of Housing and Community Development, um, based on the rent standard that is in existence.
I, I would offer that what's not fair is for us to operate for a year and a half and a year, knowing that we were overpaying rent significantly to the marketplace. So I have, I have analyses from our own agency saying that, you know, 84% of our increased voucher cost is overpayment to higher-cost vouchers. And so this is not a new problem. And I think there was a suggestion made that we approve this based on applying the new standard in the future. These, these units haven't been built yet, have they? I mean, I, I hear you melding two things. One is ongoing recertifications and all that. These, these are not online. And this is $51 million of the payments that I would hope we would want to make sure are appropriate, the, the appropriate rent. And we know for a fact that our process has some issues.
Someone else can jump in. All I know is that when the deals are being put together, they would rely on whatever the existing rent standard is, and that becomes part of the deal that is put forth. And Sega, you can comment on that, if others who know for, for certain how that works.
Well, I want to jump in. This, this is Commissioner Bond, uh, Ashley, and I do want to jump in. The District of Columbia is a municipal corporation. We're not a state. Let's be real and transparent. Our, our mayor needs to accommodate a waiting list. And that waiting list also depends on the public housing market. And Commissioner Slover, I hate to say this, and I don't always vote with you, and you know this. But when I was in Nevada, I thought I was listed only to you. And these were from HUD employees who no longer work for HUD. Now, I want to caution this housing authority again. We are not a state. We're in a municipal corporation with a mayor. And I'll be honest, I'm a mayor of, oh. I just can't tell my constituents to vote for mayor. I'm voting for him. And I'm really serious about this. Until this housing authority connect with rural housing authorities, and listen to their dilemma, which is so similar to yours and sounds so much like Bill Stuber when they talk about RAG, because you do not leverage all of your housing market to no RAG. You already so, already done with HO6. And I'm really being honest with you. HUD is not your enemy. Your director, owner-director, it's assistant director of HUD, who's up your housing authority with money. But as of yet, she has not even come to your housing authority and talk to you. I have a problem with that, and guess what? She trained me.
Director Donald, I would like, um, I'm sorry, Commissioner Slover, I would like to piggyback off what the Director Donald said. Normally, the contracts, um, or development deals are made or, um, contingent upon the rent reasonableness um, based on the tools that the housing authority provide. They take these to the investors, and they make these contracts based on that. Yes, we are in the process of doing the rent reasonableness, um, analysis. And as Director Donald stated, we will come before you May 5th with what our analysis determination will be. But we, we could not, it wouldn't be fair to the contractors and developers in the affordable housing community to go back or not approve or go back and say, now that we have this analysis done, to say, okay, you, we, we've changed the reasonableness process or the numbers for, in order to determine fair market rents so that we can, um, so we can make sure that we're in line with what the fair market is in the District of Columbia area. They've already went to the developers. They've already gone to, um, the, their boards to say, this is what the contract rents are going to be. So I understand your, your concern when it comes to the rents, um, the reason, the rent reasonableness tool being up to 187% as Director Donald stated, because not all of our rent reasonableness fall into that line of 187%. It's just a few outliers have that.
Thanks, Ms. Myers. Let's, we, we will come back as we promised, May 5th. I, I, I do need to state on record, this is just a public meeting, and just to be clear that there's no question that I'm, I'm not advocating for anything other than what I think is reasonable and fair. But full disclosure, that one of the, um, projects that is on the list for approval is a project, um, by Neighborhood Development Corporation, which, um, is, is owned and managed by my brother Adrian Washington. I have zero interest and zero involvement in any of this collection. On record.
Commissioner, one second, one, one second, one second, one second. I'm going to give you an opportunity to ask your final question, then I'm going to go to Commissioner Skinner and Commissioner Hoffman. I do want to be mindful, like many of you are, that the residents have already complained about not getting a fair chance to have any discussion. So I want to make sure we're able to get through this, so we're- So I want to make sure we're able to get through this so we're open to listen to the concerns and the witness testimony that we have before. So again, Commissioner Slaver, in this order, your last question, Commissioner Skinner, and then Commissioner Hoffman. Thank you.
So you're making an assumption that we're overpaying the rent. So you're basically conceding that we're paying too much because what you don't want to do for fear that it will drop. So the rent reasonableness process. So Director Donald, your brother is one of these people. I would suggest that maybe you not push so hard to prevent this from being put into the resolution. I don't understand that. Resolution calls, resolution.
Very insulting, Commissioner, when I have.
Very insulting, Commissioner Slaver, and I'm not going to allow us to treat each other that way. You're very insulting.
I am trying to, I'm, I'm, I apologize.
I got it, Brenda. I got it. Commissioner Slaver, let's not be rude.
No, 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 I'm not trying to be rude.
You can ask your question, but don't phrase it that way.
No, no, I apologize. I'm not trying to be that way. I'm just trying to be, um, that I'm trying to insert into this resolution. But I don't think I'll be successful in, which is to say we should retroactively look at this and make sure we're applying the proper rents. That's all I'm saying. So I'm going to leave it at that.
Thank you. Commissioner Skinner?
All right, I was on mute. Um, so Commissioner Slaver seemed to be implying that all of these projects would get the maximum up to one hundred and eighty-seven percent. And I, I think from what I heard, the, the representative from the HCD saying is that when they would look at, uh, they were, uh, felt, felt that the, see a space app uh, and looked at the rents and that there would also be another opportunity for them to review prior to these going to the council. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct, Commissioner.
All right. So all I'm saying is, um, you know, we don't know exactly, we, you know, we haven't seen exactly what the rents is for all these projects. As you, as you uh, said, Commissioner Slaver, they were selected by, uh, HCD, but our staff took this, uh, an opportunity to review. And, and as we just said, they would have another opportunity to review before going, goes to the, because again, all of these, uh, uh, contracts have to be approved by the DC Council because it's local money.
But it's under a flawed process and that's.
Well, that's the process we have until it's changed, as, as the director said.
Is that it, Commissioner Skinner?
I'm done.
Thank you. Commissioner Hoffman?
I just want to point out the contradiction between the way we treat these landlords and the way we treat our commissioners. We are saying that the landlords need to know what the cost is going to be so they can go to their investors and so forth and get the money. But we ask what the cost of our projects is going to be and we're told, no, we can't get that. So we've approved Greenleaf with having no idea what the total cost will be. We're approving Barry Farm with no idea of what the cost will be. I just think we ought to apply at least as much fairness to us, the commission, as we do to the landlord.
Thank you. Point well taken. Any other questions? Concerns? Or entertain a motion?
Uh, I move to approve Resolution twenty-two fourteen. I think it is, right, twenty-two fourteen.
Thank you. I think I heard, heard Commissioner Van Gaster re-sacred that.
All right.
Okay, Alethea?
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Van Gaster?
Sacred it.
Yeah, I'm calling for your vote.
Come for your vote, Commissioner Van Gaster.
That's where I'm having a problem. I'm roaming.
No, we can hear you. We can hear you now. Is that a yes or no?
I'm staying.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Parker?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Strickland? Commissioner Strickland? I'll circle back. Um, Commissioner Skinner?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Hoffman?
No.
Thank you. Commissioner Slaver?
No.
Thank you. Commissioner Fauchekio?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Council?
No.
Thank you. Uh, is Commissioner Strickland there?
Somehow it seems like you got dropped off. Uh, did you get Commissioner Fauchekio?
Yes, I did. And, uh, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. That's five yes, three no, uh, one abstention. Resolution twenty-two fourteen is approved.
Thank you. I think we're down to Resolution twenty-two seventeen.
Yep.
All right. Please proceed.
Commissioner's Resolution twenty-two seventeen is to authorize submission of rental assistance demonstration program's application to HUD for Willer Creek. Any questions or comments?
Question, comments, discussion? Commissioner Van Gaster, I know you said it earlier. You wanted to mention something during this session. Can you hear us? Are you still roaming? Any other commissioners have any questions?
Can I have a question about, well, I think Commissioner Van Gaster is trying to ask about what negative impact there may be in the residents shifting from, uh, ACC factor to RAD in terms of uh, ability to, uh, to, uh, form groups, to have representation. Uh, is there any impact, uh, shifting subsidies?
Um, Seth, did you hear the question? Understand the question. Is there any negative impact with this, uh, RAD approval for the residents?
The first impact should been that I I've been on the board for seventeen years and I live in public housing. Now I'll be here when all of y'all are gone and nobody heard what I said. And I'm the only commissioner that could have ran to run to be a family commissioner and chose not to because of my seventeen years. So therefore, what I find is this board do not respect my seniority or my side vice on this board. And if this board actually investigated me like your Carl Ross Singh did, that you don't know about, uh, Chair Buzzie, because, uh, you somewhere else. So if you weren't somewhere else and you understood who I am on the board, I would be the one to give respect because I chose not to run again.
I'm, I'm sorry, Commissioner Van Gaster. I don't, I don't know what you're speaking of. I was, we were waiting.
I'm saying, because this is what I'm saying about this board. And my constituents are listening loud and clear. My constituents know who I am. Very transparent with ethics, integrity, and a wife from a husband from Iran who live in your public housing. And you don't even know what type of laws I live under. Whether it's the prominent justice law or the laws of, uh, housing, um, community. Because that's who I populate about. But nobody cares on this board. We just look at business as usual. We can no longer look at business as usual. We have to look at who we are. And I, I, I apologize really because I'm being beautiful, intelligent, intellectual, terrible and humble. And this is my last board meeting.
Commissioner Van Gaster, we were asking you.
It's an insult. I'm serious. It's an insult to me for real.
Well, I don't, I don't know what you're speaking of. I, I called on you specifically.
Carefully, and I'm serious. Karen Saddle, who has just as much right as you, because she was an intra-director of a collaborative, Christine Spencer, who taught at a collaborative. And I've been humble of all Muslims on your board, the only registered Muslim in the District of Columbia Housing Authority, board of commissioner, or maybe nationwide, is Ramadan. And I still don't get no respect. I ain't never a mayor or enemy, nor Adrian Fenty. So let's don't get it twisted. And I'm hurt today.
Hold on.
I, I, and it's two oh six, but I hate you. Yes.
Aquarius, thank you for your seventeen years of service.
I'm really sorry. I'm being for real. Nobody care about the chair. You tell me, I know. I got no choice. I'm like, I'm a plant, die. So don't disrespect me on your board. I'm sorry, seventeen years in your housing. I ain't never made no money. My family, I got one family that worked for y'all. I ain't never even know about it and I don't even concern about her. And I'm not going to be no punk on your board. So my constituents better listen. RAD is not the, the, the solution to all of our housing problems.
We hear you. We hear you loud and clear.
Can I ask one, one more question, um, on this resolution? Um, in, in one of the wheres, it talks about, um, uh, uh, the DCHA reviewed in conjunction with the owner, uh, to make sure that the, that the, uh, the project, the RAD would be financially feasible. Um, and that there was a financing plan prepared, um, to meet the project's needs. Did I assume DCHA reviewed that?
Commissioner Slaver, this is, uh, Andre Gold, uh, Associate Vice President of Development. And, and we did review a performer that was provided by the development team.
So is there a reason, is there a reason why the board doesn't get things like that?
There was a, a deal template, template summary that should have been uploaded to Diligent.
I'm not sure I saw that. Um, I'm not saying it didn't exist. Uh, but you're comfortable with, uh, their projections?
That's correct, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. And Aquarius, thank you for your seventeen years of service. It's been a pleasure.
Are there any other questions regarding this resolution?
I'm, I'm going to make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two seventeen.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Alethea?
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Fauchekio?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Council?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Hoffman?
No.
Thank you. Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Parker?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Skinner?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Slaver?
No.
Thank you. Commissioner Van Gaster? Commissioner Van Gaster, are you there? Uh, what about Commissioner Strickland?
Yes.
He told me. Okay, thank you. Okay, um, and Madam Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. Is, uh, seven yes, two no, Resolution twenty-two seventeen is approved.
Thank you. We're going to move to our executive director's report. And then I have a couple of comments afterwards.
Madam Chair, unless the board disagrees in the interest of time, I've submitted my report. It's general updates. Um, I would prefer to move to the citizen comments, but if you want me to run through it, I would be happy to do it.
I'll check in with our commissioners. I am fine with that. Commissioners, do you all have an objection to that? Would you prefer for the director to move forward with her report or what we have in our notes is fine?
Let's move forward for public, please.
Let's hear it.
Yeah, move forward.
All right, that works. And then I do have a resa, I have a proclamation that we want to actually provide before we end. So Alethea, we'll move on to public comments.
Okay, sure. Let's see, the first we have for our general public comments, we have someone listed as a Jane Doe. Is there someone on the line four listed as Jane Doe? Okay, I'll move on. Sheila Murphy? Sheila Murphy? Okay, uh, Florence Thompson? Florence Thompson? Uh, La Monica Jeffrey? Again, if you're having trouble unmuting, uh, star six nine, I believe, if you want to sail. La Monica Jeffrey? No, okay. Kivana Connerly? No, okay.
Hi, Ms. Connerly here.
Okay, what is your name?
I apologize. I'm trying to do a million things. Kivana Connerly.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Hi.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Ms. McNair. Good afternoon, everyone. Can you hear me okay? Again, my name is Kivana Connerly. I am currently a D suite, well, uh, I'm a native Washingtonian. I am currently enrolled in the DC Housing, um, Housing Voucher Program, uh, which I've been in since twenty seventeen. Um, my comment today is about resident safety. Uh, real quick, before I go into that, I would like to say thank you to Director Donaldson. Um, I personally know the load that you stepped into and I appreciate the choices and your, um, members, your everyone that you are putting in position because I personally see a big difference. Um, Ms. Cooper, Ms. Patricia Cooper, I have to say thank you specifically to her also. Um, I live in the Brooklyn Ridge Apartment Complex, uh, Northeast DC. And there were maintenance issues that I had been requesting to be fixed since twenty eighteen. The unit above me flooded twice in a thirty-day timeframe. Um, there was mold growing on the carpet visible, so I knew it was under the carpet as well. Uh, my mom visits from time to time, respiratory issues. Long story short, I had reached out to do a public testimony at one of the DCHA uh, meetings maybe two months ago, and Ms. Cooper reached out to me. Ms. Cooper reached out to the property and within less than two weeks, they were ready to complete requests that I had been making for the past five years. Uh, so again, thank you. Thank you for everything you guys are doing, are trying to do. I personally understand how messed up the housing system is here in DC and. and it will be another twenty years before we can visibly really see a lot of the changes that those of us natives and those of us who have been in housing have been asking for. All right, now, to get to the topic of discussion, for my discussion for today is safety, residential safety. I understand that maintenance has a job to do, property managers have a job to do. Um, my most current situation, I call an inspector, I call housing to have an inspection done. This unit passed failed inspection in 2020. Again, because of COVID, no one was able to come out and actually do a follow-up inspection. However, this time around, I was given the opportunity to take the LERT certification so that I could do a walkthrough with the inspector virtually and complete the inspection myself. That was done. I completed that. I did the first inspection February, I believe. So it was time for the follow-up inspection. Um, Inspector, I believe his name was Inspector Ray, was on the phone with maintenance. I was in the restroom. I had just picked my daughters up from school. They had a half-day this particular Wednesday. I was under the impression that I would be getting a phone call to conduct the virtual re-inspection, just like I had did the initial inspection. I'm in the restroom. My daughters are changing, um, to get out of their school clothes, get showered, and maintenance knocked at the door. Before I could get up, I told my daughters just a second. They said just a second to the, at the door. They are not allowed to open the door. They are young girls, and again, they were changing. Before I could get out of the bathroom, my daughter comes back here screaming, "Oh, my God, Mommy, there's men in the house. There's men in the house." And I'm like, "Maintenance, ma-" uh, she's like, "Maintenance, maintenance just walked in. Maintenance just walked in." So my other daughter ran in the room. She was indisposed. And I would deny the option or chance to have the re-inspection done, because when I did answer the door, when I did finally get myself out of the bathroom and to the door, they were, they had him on the phone. And yes, I was upset, and I was vocal about being upset, because I've had several incidents at this property with people coming into my home. While I'm not home, things have come up missing. I have records of everything. Um, I have OCD. I leave things in a very, very particular way, so I know when someone enters my unit. Some, they used to leave notes or, um, tags saying, "We did this service when we came in." So I've been requesting both verbally and in writing that I be notified and called the day of or prior to, give me prior notice before someone entering my home. I understand this is your job, but this is my home. Big difference. Um, and yes, we have to work together. So my issue with the safety is we're not allowed to change our locks. And if we do change the locks on our unit, we have to give the rental office key. Where does the residential security and safety come in? I have, um, not only chronic illnesses, I also have mental health issues that I deal with on a daily basis. I was molested as a child. So for me to have men walking into my home while my children are half-dressed, myself half-dressed, it struck a nerve, and I've been unsettled ever since. Um, home security systems are fine and well, but I'm on disability. So to keep adding bills monthly is not feasible for myself. What options do the tenants have to secure their in-home safety? Thank you all. Appreciate what you all do, and that, that's my question for today.
Our Director, may I ask a question to Ms. Connerly? Um, are you part of the Housing Choice Voucher Program or low-income public housing? Okay. Okay, I just wanted to make sure I was clear about, you know, the landlord and whether we're the landlord or we have a private landlord. Okay, thank you.
And see, they, sometimes the property kinda plays games with that, and I'm sure this is not the only property who does that. With some concerns that I may address to them, they'll say, "Oh, you have to go to housing." And I'm like, "But this is the property. You guys manage the property. I pay you guys rent. I don't pay housing. Housing pays, the voucher pays a portion of my rent, and I pay the rest out of pocket." So the issues that I'm addressing or concerned with, I feel as though the property should address them, but I didn't get any response from the property until Ms. Cooper stepped in on my behalf.
Okay, thank you. That clarification.
No problem.
Ms. Connerly, I, I apologize to you for that experience. Um, definitely something we're gonna get on top of, so.
Thank you.
We're so sorry for that.
It's all right. It's not your guys' fault. Um, it's just, like I said, it's unsettling. And like I was trying to explain to the maintenance, um, the maintenance supervisor and one of the workers were here, so they had their witness, as well as having the inspector, I'm sorry, my kids are on spring break, as well as having the inspector on the phone. So if I wanted to be technical, I could say there were three strange men, you know, that entered my home. However, I'm, I'm not even trying to beat that bullet right now. My concern again is just exactly what is it that we can do about safety? Why was my inspection denied? The, the inspector said it was too much tension in my voice, and, and I quote, "Ms. Connerly, there's too much tension in your voice. I don't think we should follow through with the inspection." I said, "Okay, you know, you have it your way." But yes, I'm, I'm disturbed about someone continuously walking in, into.
No, you're, we're clear. We're clear, and that's gonna be rectified. Thank you, uh, Ms. Sweeney for handling that. Again, our apologies to you, Ms. Connerly.
Thank you all. Have a great day.
Thank you. Alethea?
Deborah Thomas? Deborah Thomas? Uh, Deshaun Murphy? Uh, Ms. Shante, hi? Hi?
Ms. How was he or she was in the chat earlier?
Yes.
Come back to her.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Rosa Burbage? Let's see her listed. Um, Paulette Matthews for your general comments? Ms. Matthews, you there? Moving along, uh, Trees Bill?
I'm here.
Yes.
This is Paulette Matthews. Uh, when we're in the holding state, just to let y'all know, um, I have a phone where as though I have to insert a code before that. So just please allow me the time to put it in to be able to say I'm here. Um, 'cause again, I'm on the phone. Um, actually, I'm just listening to the residents. It's like all the time I have something to talk about, which in the past, I brought all of these things up. The safety issue with the, uh, maintenance people coming to your house when you're not home, all these things, it's like déjà vu. Um, the fact that they, you know, you will call and get a control number, you would think that in that week's time or something that they will let you know, which they don't, and they might not even come in that week. Um, it's been sometimes where they say they're coming for inspections or whatever the case may be, and you might change your days off so that you could be there, then they don't show. Um, and so safety do become an, an issue with everybody, because at the beginning of the day, in the end, it's their job, but then it's our safety that we have to be, um, concerned about, because it does put a lot of mental and emotional stress for you if you've already gone through situations or you're trying to prevent situations from happening. Um, in the past, and in the future, I'm gonna constantly say that I think that along with this board meeting, that there should be, uh, police monthly, uh, uh, meetings, um, where they should be on to let you know what's going in the community. On March the 26th, I was not at home. I was actually in Ward Five, where I was kinda born and raised. I got a phone call talking about shots. I ain't know, or text rather. And I'm like, "What's going on?" Like, so I took it that there was shooting going on around in my neighborhood. Um, and kinda find out two or three days later, um, I saw a neighbor who had said that she had picked up twelve shells from the front of her house. Two shells probably still previously sit there. Uh, I had a meet in with Ms. Earth the other day, Friday. Um, and so she was able to see that, um, because, uh, we're still dealing with my fence issues. Um, and so, you know, we have cameras, and it's sad to think that all these cameras, they say are installed, but when it really comes time to use them or find out things, it's not. You actually have to be on the ground dead for things to take place. I don't even think that MPD, MPD might have showed. My girlfriend said one of the police were back in the back, but didn't come forth. I'm trying to figure out if they were around or about. How did she collect twelve shells? And how did, how was there two remaining shells still left? Might be still out on the ground as I speak right now. And nobody probably had a clue of what was going on or what happens. And, you know, we keep talking about safety, and nobody can control these people with these guns, and we're living here, we're dropping on floors and all of that type of stuff. It, it, it's very, um, it's, it, it, it's sad for one, but we're, we're in a day and time where as though our lives are always at risk. And when we're in our own house, we should be safe without people just entering. And a forty-eight-hour notice should be given to every resident. Um, they have the maintenance people out here doing things like, I had some cactus outside. I mean, they sent plenty of letters talking about some roofing that's gonna be done, but not on my particular, uh, where I live in the townhomes, but the apartments. But I got like three, four letters about that, but I didn't get not one letter saying that they were gonna have the landscaping people come out. And when they did, so that I could move my cactus, they destroyed my cactus. I gave the resident manager the information, but y'all need to consider these residents and when we get relocated and all that. And I have a question, because I want to know what's the difference or what is disposition? Um, what is, uh, disposition, reputation? What is that, and what does that consist of? And I don't think that my answers, questions were answered before that I did ask, just to let you know. And I be talking fast, 'cause I know y'all gonna cut us off, whereas we have to listen to y'all go through what y'all go through, or whatever the case may be. So what is demo and demo disposition? What does it mean? And when we come to the language, then, thank you, Aquarius, there needs to be something so that we can understand and be talked to in real time for the understanding of knowing what's going on around us. And, um, I heard the question being asked, well, to try to distinguish whether she was, uh, living in public housing or voucher or whatever. What difference does it make? See, that's the problem. Where we get to talking private and the vouchers and the this and that and the other, y'all all pay a part of it, and that's what you get. You be caught in the middle, and nobody seems to do nothing, because they're trying to decide who you with. We are all supposed to be in this together, so whatever the concerns are, if it's not you, then you should still reach out to the people that you have now gave a part of this business with. Because at the end of the day, we're the ones who suffer from it. I got more, but I'm gonna stop right there.
Um, Ms. Matthews, this is Brenda Donald. Just to respond to your last point, the only reason that, um, we asked, um, if the, if the, um, if the resident was in public housing or vouchers, was that we, so we would know how to follow up. She raised some concerns about people coming into her unit unauthorized, and, um, she had concerns about that. We just wanted to make sure if that was our staff, which we would deal with in a different way, or if it was the management company, which we can address that. So that, that was the only reason for that clarification.
Okay, understood, but at the same time, she stated where she lived at. I think she stated all of that. But it still comes to be a question because, uh, and a concern, because that's always, I get you trying to figure out who should you reach out to, but at the same time, all of y'all are involved, and you can get in contact with those individuals if it ain't y'all. But at the beginning and the end of the day, it's under DCHA. And so I get it, and I don't get it.
Yes, ma'am.
Because you're still left in the middle, waiting for whoever to make whatever move they're gonna make, which sometimes it takes a long time. Like she said, gave thanks, but she just also says she waited five years or something for something to happen, and I'm thankful for that. But that's how DCHA do it. But yet they'll give us thirty days or sixty days to do something that we need to do, or we could get evicted. And so what's good for the goose should be good, good for the gander. And this has been the history of DCHA, and I appreciate you as well. But I have some issues going on to myself that I don't think this should have been taking as long as it is. I got, they gonna say relocated, I'm gonna say displaced, I'm gonna say not know when I'm getting back, that I'm dealing with right now at this particular point since 2019. And COVID can be used as an excuse, but now it's open what we gonna do. And please stop making the same mistakes that would have been made in the past. The gentleman, Mr. Skinner, or whatever his name is, if I messed it up, I'm sorry. Uh, he talking about the past. Well, the past has been a nightmare for a lot of people. Sometimes way before we was born. We're still making these same mistakes, just with different players in the game. We gotta do something so much different, because you're messing with the physical and mental state of that when it seems to be the whole concern is money over people, when it should be people over money. And it's not just DCH, it's just a system, period. So you have to follow the guidelines of what, you understand what I'm saying? But it's, it's sad, and it, and, and, and it's very disturbing. Because we can come and do these meetings each and every day like we have been doing, and we're still getting the same results. We're getting a little process, but goodness gracious. Enough is like enough, and that's just out of all due respect. Like you should treat somebody human. You wouldn't want nobody just to walk in your door or not give you any, you know, notice that I'm coming or something, so that you can be able to do the necessary things you need to do.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews. I have, Commissioner Hoffman, you have a question or comment?
Yeah, um, I just wonder if somebody who's more articulate on real estate matters than I am can explain to Ms. Matthews what a demo dispo is.
Andre, Andrea, string.
And while he gets on the line, um, is there, uh, a meeting today, um, on Calametta Property? And if so, is it at six o'clock or six thirty? I heard it, but I'm not clear, because if it is, I would like to be a part of.
Director, would you like me to go ahead?
Please answer a question about the meeting.
Yeah, I'm not aware of a meeting. I don't think it's one that we initiated. Maybe that someone else is having one, it might be invited, but it's not one that, that we organized.
Okay, I thought it was in reference to, uh, relocation and stuff, so it, it not today, or maybe it's tomorrow? And I will share with my sources, but I was informed that last night, so I'm just asking.
Yes, ma'am. We'll double check. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Describe the demo dispo.
Certainly. Um, under the HUD requirements, if there's going to be a demolition or dispo disposition, which is a transfer of property of HUD, of public housing property, DCHA has to apply to HUD, um, to do that disposition or transfer of property as well as demolition. For Berry Farm, uh, we received that approval, um, in 2017 for demolition as well as disposition. So that was the authority we were able to use to demolish the units at Berry Farm. And then now we're working on the disposition, um, as a part of the upcoming closings. So disposition and demolition are requirements of HUD, uh, before you can move forward with any type of transfer or conveyance or demolition.
Thank you.
Sure, no problem.
So, uh, is it, where, is it anything that makes it public and private once you do that? Like when the developers get involved? I mean, because I don't have an understanding, but I'm trying to get a better understanding of how the whole process work. Yes.
I don't, I don't mean to be rude, but, and I have no problem, you know, I'll talk to you. We can set up an offline conversation, because you do have other residents that wanna testify, and I wanna make sure they get their proper chance too. So would you like for us to do an email with you, 'cause we, and set up a time for you to meet with one of our staff persons, so they can further explain and answer your questions?
I appreciate that, but for some apparent reason, I'm having some problems. My email, Daniel has told me, has been, um, uh, coming back or shooting back. I don't know, they trying to work on that. So for me, it can only really be like a phone call or a text message or something like that. So you have my number, so, um, that's fine with me. I appreciate that. Thank you.
No problem. You're welcome.
And I'm sorry to those whose time I have taken up. I'm done.
Thank you. Thank you. Alethia?
Thank you. Um, Sheila Murphy. Is Ms. Murphy on the line? I'm hearing a lot of background. If you can mute if you are speaking. Okay, I'll move on. Um, Treese Belt. Cora's Lowry. Again, if you're having problems unmuting, you can hit star six nine if you wanna sell. Patricia Bishop.
Hello, everyone. My name is Patricia Bishop, Green Leaf Resident Council President. I want to thank, first of all, thank Aquarius for her seventeen years of service. That was very much appreciated and her representation for the families. Back to each and everything that I spoke as Commissioner spoke about on this board. Today is still so disturbing that it is the same old, same old. And getting a direct, correct, positive answer when they are asked from a specific person to answer. Andre Grue, you getting paid. I, I can call some more names, but y'all need to get on point, do what's right. So does y'all wanna keep looking bad when these questions are asked? The waterfall as a suggestion about money and housing falling after everybody else get theirs? What about the tenants who paid their rent for this waterfall to get even built? Hear me clearly, Ms. Bishop would no longer sit back and accept the disrespect out of housing. When it first was developed at eleven thirty-three, that sign said fair and equal housing, let's get it together. I appreciate Ms. Nona East. I appreciate Ms. Cooper. But for me to have to send an email out to get something done when it should have been done when I got sworn in? Get me loud and clear, I am sworn in and I'm gonna abide by my rules. And everybody else should abide by their rules because when I start letting some stuff out, don't say, oh, I wasn't aware of that. Oh, I'll get back to you. Just like when we meet with those developers, how disrespectful they are. And when they start quoting what they wanna do in here and then wanna build pit heat, we've been asking for heat and air. When everybody else is accommodated in this building with proper air, that we don't, they don't get charged seven dollars additional. Hear me clear, all this should have been taken care of. We shouldn't have to bring this to the attention of the board. But we will and we will continue to will because I said and I mean it. Y'all will see me in another room if y'all continue to conduct business as usual. I am very disturbing upset. I have a bad heart. I don't need my pressure going up. I don't need to hear about somebody walked in on some woman and her children. That she had to come up in here for y'all to jump on it. When that first phone call went to her or to whoever, that should have been handled. An apology, a letter should have been sent to her and a follow-up letter on what was done with these employees. She didn't get the personal reaction out of anybody before she came to this meeting. There's always a right time to do what's right and stop pitting us last. We lived, we paid our rent, we seen the same old. When I was a little girl, I'm sixty-two years old, and I have been hearing the same thing over and over. Whether it is a commissioner trying to do what's right, get the right answers, vote no, vote yes. It still ain't getting done right as far as we who paid our money to DC Housing for we who represent HUD to get the job done. That's all we ask, we deserve it, we re, we require it because it has been written. They don't even have in the budget and I asked for it. When they install these heating air, every unit in here need to have money in advance for circuit breakers in these units. Have they came back to y'all and told y'all about that? Have y'all approved or denied additional money for that? Recall the messages, here's a message and do something about the message. And good trouble I will continue to get in. Have a blessed day.
Thank you, Ms. Bishop. Alethia?
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Karen Saddles.
Afternoon, everyone. It's been a long meeting. I, I want to first start by, um, talking to, um, sending my regards to Commissioner Von Ostry for the long phenomenal work she's done as it relates to, uh, representing the public housing family community. Actually, the whole shalata, to tell you the truth. Her advocacy and her advocating as far as for residents' rights have been phenomenal, in my view. I, 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 I think it's less words to say thank you. I like to say more. But it's been tireless work. Uh, I've been on that mission with her, not always agreeing, no matter. It doesn't matter about that. Going to same place is what I think and that we're better together. I just wanna thank you, thank you, thank you for all the hard work. I know you still in. And I just need to say that first. I can't, I, I wanted to be, uh, in the hearing today to talk about some of the same things, so I won't rough over it. But I, I would like to make a statement for the record. That public housing residents will no longer be treated like non-citizens of the District of Columbia. As residents, we have the same rights that any other resident in the city has. Uh, I'd like to say a little more about why, but we all know. As I'm a native Washingtonian, five generations of that, and I'm proud to be a native Washingtonian. I'm very sad and ashamed at some of the techniques that are being used on resident leadership. I called the day for it to stop immediately and I don't wanna air it out on the air. But I can't call it out. I'm asking to meet with individuals to be able to talk it through. Cause we are better together. It matters that resident leadership and residents have a relationship with their housing authority. It really matters. And it matters in the sense because this board exists to represent the best interest of residents. We may not always agree, but we should be understanding of what the best interest of residents is. It's not happening here. It's just not. We have been out of receivership now for twenty-one and a half years almost. And we still, we are worse shape now than we were when we required the receivership, which we were seventeen on the FMAP score. So we wasn't as bad as, as being said, but we had a receivership. We just had a commissioner election that was a train wreck, although we got through it, that we should never, ever, ever have to tolerate again. I go on ballot when I cast my vote for this election for the commissioners that I voted for. And I knew that it was the wrong technique. I brought it to the attention of the independent third party. And they said it was miss, a miscommunication. That miscommunication connected to several other miscommunications in a contractual agreement that most residents that I was encouraging to vote, for the record, twenty-one residents of Sartor and Ford Dupont voted. But also for the record, it could have been more because a lot of residents weren't notified. I carry the weight of a resident leader honorably. But we need, we need help as far as technical assistance. I feel that the housing authority is overriding themselves as far as it relates to resident leadership. They are, they are deep dive into the dynamics of the resident leadership to the point where it's a blinding, it's, it's blinding resident leaders. And I don't appreciate us not being treated like honored citizens who stepped up and the courage to step up to lead. Some of the things that was learned from the past, I like to say, cause the past only recti, is rectified when we've learned from it. Uh, this housing authority has definitely not learned from all the mistakes that we've made, but we doing better. I will say that. We can do much better. This, these meetings that are being held and the timeliness of them, uh, some people got off the line. And that's because it should be two meetings. The receivership proved that you would need two phases of a meeting a month in order to, to be able to have a regard. But the housing authority don't even have a hotline for people to make concerns, uh, of, make their concerns on voice. I don't like, I appreciate every staff person. I believe that the staff truly, truly works very hard. I know that. But if you working hard and not smart, it's not working for us. I hear boasting all the time about the housing authority as participants have moved to work. Let's move it then. Let's, let's get this thing moving to work, really moving to work. Because the truth is, is that we can do much more. We're not. And because we are residents and this is a service job, if it wasn't for the residents, where would you be? We have to truly, truly treat each other more humane than we are doing right now. It's, it's just, it's disheartening. I'd like to thank Commissioner Snowver for the intense questioning that he does. Cause it unfolds knowledge to residents who are on. It really does. It gets very tedious, it's true, but I love every minute of it because for every question, no for every answer that he gets, it unfolds a new discovery for residents to understand the process. Why are we wondering what the process is and not know it? I don't sit in a good place not knowing what the process is. All these terms that are being used on residents, some, a lot of new, uh, leadership, not only that, residents in general. We need to know what these processes is, are. And I'm not gonna use, uh, uh, this word transparency has nothing to do with anything. In order for a resident to make an intelligent decision on their household and also to represent their community, you have to have real information, accurate information. I'm afraid to give my residents information pertaining to announcements from the housing authority for lieu of it not even being true. I don't wanna be a re, a leader who passes information that's not valid information. Ms. Nona has been true to her word, I will say. I have talked to Ms. Cooper. I, yeah, I intend to make sure that both of us understand each other clearly. But again, I'm gonna emphasize highly, the housing authority has enough work to do with what we are to contend with and that unveiling of when I make a mistake or a resident makes a mistake and, and more so elected resident making a mistake, it's dragged through the mud. Our housing authority has done several things that has not been revealed, reported on or anything from us. To the point when HUD was doing their review, which was made clear, clear to us when they met with the resident leadership, they were doing a review. We heard that it was being an investigation. There are two different words. I don't like being misled that way. I didn't bash the housing authority interview. Yes?
I, I've, I've been very, very patient. I'm so sorry. You going way over your time, but what you're saying is good information and I don't wanna cut you off, but I wanted you to kind of wrap it up if you could.
I certainly will. And I thank you for the overtime, but that's two is, is a few mark as well. Um, I'm speaking on behalf of the property issues, which I haven't been able to get to. But I'm generally speaking as the advisory board chair. We struggle every day with listening to all this controversy. When you got a board, this is the first time, I, I'll bring that up to you, that I heard conformity with people voting together. I heard all this back and forth. We get to hear that battle. But I will tell you, uh, uh, chairperson, Bazi, that I think in all fairness, you all are trying the best that you can. We need the type of, uh, information and, uh, inclusion that, that allows us to be able to be a part of the conversation. You understand? I, I, I wrap it up by saying this to you and to all the board members. We have a right as leaders and representatives and serving our community to be able to lobby the board members for those resolutions that come out. Those resolutions are crucial to our everyday life. We don't have that opportunity to do that. We have to treat ourselves like we are hierarchy of a, a board of commissioners. It's not happening now. I expect us to do better, but I, I expect us to do better together, together. I can't say it enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, President Marie T. LaBelle, am I saying that correctly?
Ms. Lowery, I'm on the line. You called me early.
Yes, Ms. Jeffrey. Okay, please proceed. You have five minutes.
Okay, thank you. Um, first of all, I'd like to, um, also thank in honor of Ms. Aquarius and Gretzel. Thank you for your help. Thank you for your time. Um, I know everybody think you're a hard ass and you are, but you're great at what you do. Um, and no, we always don't agree. But, but here's my issue. I'm here again, talking about the same issue. Um, this morning I wake up with a rat again, so I sent out emails to everybody, so I'm sure all of y'all got it. Um, and so I'm not, you know, I'm having a hard time overstating that. There, my reasonable accommodations that I had to fill out so many different times was approved on the twenty-second of last month. I didn't receive it until I sent out an email with the rat this morning about, uh, it was approved today. And we're just waiting on my, me and you. Once again, that's been the problem the whole time we've been waiting on the here. I'm at, I'm waiting on the offer. My health is being affected. I do not have the priority of life. My name is Cora's Lowery, L O W E R Y. My phone number is two oh two five nine zero nine six one two. I know there's a lawyer. I know there's a counselor. I know there's a person who can help me. If you give me a call, my email is Lowerycallers, same as my name, just, you know, at yahoo dot com. If someone will call me and help me and assist me to move first. And I, I, I'm not even overstating my, my problem was being unlivable. Um, two months ago, three months ago, January, December, really. And I'm still in this apartment because I won't accept them. Thank you so much. But once again, I'm calling this month and if I'm not yourself, I'll call next month and talk and get one down. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. LaBelle.
No, my name is Lowery, L O W E R Y.
I'm sorry. I apologize. I, these glasses wasn't big. I didn't have the screen big enough. I apologize. Ms. Alethia, you can go to the next, um, witness.
Okay, um, we're moving on to now non-residents who have three minutes. Uh, the first one is Danielle Pickett. Ms. Pickett on the line? Uh, Neil Melvin? Yes, can you state your name?
Um, Emily Melvin.
Okay, Emily Melvin. I'm sorry. Uh, you have three minutes. Please proceed.
Can someone mute the, uh, the background noise? Uh, you muted Neil too, there you go.
Okay. Hi there, my name is Emily Melvin. I'm a fourth year medical student currently working for the Help Justice Alliance, a medical legal partnership between Georgetown Law and Georgetown School of Medicine. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak with you all today. So in our practice at the Georgetown Help Justice Law Alliance Clinic, we represent many clients who are DCHA residents. And face health harming situations related to their housing. And these experiences bear many similarities to their concerns folks have expressed on today's call so far. My goal today is to express the health impact of several of the most common concerns DCHA residents express. First and foremost, I want to talk about safety. We have represented clients who were victims of domestic violence and acute life threatening situations. Who had to continue living in their unsafe housing for several weeks because DCHA did not have a safe alternative for the family to move into. Our clients have also expressed that their children encountered used needles and other paraphernalia on their complexes playground. On today's call, we've heard about concerns of intrusion by maintenance and other staff without residents' knowledge or notice. Which violates privacy and safety of residents. And we've also heard about feelings of displacement and uncertainty regarding moving back to original housing units such as Berry Farms. And finally, we've heard about, um, residents who've experienced, uh, issues with rats or other rodents, um, or vermin in their, in their apartments. And not only do many of these situations I described violate the D C, D C Housing Code, they also represent harmful situations for residents' health. The psychological and physical impact of living in situations like this, where residents constantly fear for the safety of their children and themselves are enormous and difficult to quantify. When people experience persistent levels of serious stress for long periods of time, we can call it toxic stress. This type of stress impacts hormone levels, brain function, ability to fight infections, and even the timing of puberty and development in children. High levels of cortisol from long-term stress can increase cholesterol, triglyceride levels, blood sugar and blood pressure. Which are common risk factors for chronic conditions like diabetes and heart disease. Furthermore, many DCHA residents are mothers or expectant mothers. And we know that toxic stress during pregnancy increases the risk of preterm labor, low birth weight infants and preeclampsia. D C has one of the highest maternal mortality rates in the country with nearly twice the national rate. And we have to acknowledge the impact that stress from feeling unsafe, unsafe in housing units can have on a mother's pregnancy and the life of her future children. There have been thousands of research studies that have investigated the impact of adverse childhood experiences that arise from living in unsafe housing. And these studies show that children with many adverse experiences have significantly increased risks of depression, anxiety, suicidality. And diabetes and later in life. And while these are extremely sobering facts, we also know there's a lot that we can do. By preventing these adverse experiences and creative, creating safer housing conditions. Studies show us that we could reduce the number of children who develop depression later in life by as much as forty-four percent. And we could see a reduction by as much as fifteen percent in the amount of people who are unemployed. Our ask today is for DCHA to make a commitment to safety in your housing units for the sake of current residents, their children. And the health of our communities, both now and in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, everyone, um, Ms. Melvin, do you have any information you could post in the comments, contact info? This is Ms. Connolly, I spoke a little while ago.
Yes, absolutely.
Ms. Ha, come on through, I knew they called you. I'm sorry, y'all, I'm.
Ms. Ha, if you're available, please go ahead with your testimony, you have five minutes.
Thank you. Um, thank you, my name is Ms. Ha. I'm sorry. Matthew five eleven blessed are we are you when others revile you and persecute you. And utter all kinds of evil against you falsely on my account. I quote that scripture in light of the executive director Brenda Donald hosting meetings behind my back. Willa Toya, Thomas Goldstein and several other DCHA staff members at the helm working to coerce residents. To speak negatively against me until one resident spoke up in the meeting, telling them everyone. That she is not going to allow them to speak that way. I'm grateful, my grateful residents know how hard I work, how much I care and what I have endured to help them. And I asked DCHA for help and I'm always rejected. Then I end up getting a job done on my own, like I did when I raised money, ten thousand dollars. To help bury the Muschet family, when I asked DCHA for the money first and I was turned down. But Chairwoman Bussie Reader received five hundred and fifty thousand dollars for her nonprofit. The Fed, the Far Southeast Strengthening Family Collaborative, as well as, uh, Executive Donald. Receiving her contract for three hundred and thirty, uh, three hundred thousand dollars. That is such a shame when we residents and presidents are boots on the ground in our community and don't get a dime. Not even so much as a stipend for the mounds of manure that we deal with. Revelations two two, I know your work and your toll and your patient endurance. And how you cannot bear with those who are evil and put, and have tested, but tested. Those who call themselves apostles and are not and found them to be false. Yet here we are, here I am again at the B O C meeting, giving yet another testimony. That for the record, will be swept under the rug like the rest, ignored like my many requests that I've sent to DCHA. To see the units you want to force me into sight unseen as a disabled, single mother causing me. Further trauma to my life and psyche as well as my children. Psalm one oh five thirteen fifteen, when they were few in number, a little account and sojourners in it. Wandering from nation to nation, from one kingdom to another, people will allow, he allow no one to oppress them. He rebuked kings in their account, saying, touch my, touch not my anointed, do my prophets no harm. Yet with all the scriptures I bring to DCHA, that too is ignored. Because every person who has ever testified to this commission has cried out for help. And the B O C has done nothing to resolve their issue, they've only exacerbated them. This brings me to my final point about DCHA. On Monday, April the eleventh, twenty twenty-two, I received a call from a neighbor informing me. That DC Fire and EMS were at my building door trying to get in. I went to the balcony to find out that they got a call about a fifty-six-year-old female in apartment twenty-one. Who was having a stroke. I informed them that it wasn't me and instructed them to go across the street to check on my neighbor Laura Williams. We call her Lulu or Lou. EMS did not follow my directions. I saw Kyle, the maintenance man, and explained to him what happened to the lock on my building door. Then instructed him to go check on Lou. I received no word back from Kyle. On Tuesday, April twelfth, twenty twenty-two, I watched as my neighbor Lou was carted off in a body bag. Deceased because EMS and DCHA maintenance did not listen to me the first time. You people keep hiring people, but what purpose did Ms. Danielle Littlejohn serve? This happened during the time that the property management office was supposed to be open and operational. Where was Ms. Littlejohn? What purpose did she serve again, where was she? DCHA wants to bully, intimidate and harass me out of my home because of this redevelopment. However, you don't take care of the people that are currently here. I asked for my voucher when the bag opened up and vouchers were being dealt out like a spade hand. However, I wasn't dealt then, so you want to, you want to keep me here. Uh, you have to dealt with, deal with what you got. You stirred this monster, you have to deal with what you created. And that's because you either are going to communicate with me one way or the other. Okay, I, I am going to inspect those units, plural, that you offered me. To allow me to decide what is best for me and my family. Or we can go the long route, which will drag this redevelopment out another year or two. It takes me, makes me know, never mind, because either way, I get to keep my place. While y'all make a decision and my other plans fall into place. Because I'm not playing with y'all any, any longer. First Celestians as I close, five twenty-two abstain from every form of evil. President Ha, out.
Olivia.
Um, next person is Shastari, Shastar Gamble. Okay, I'll move on, Chris Williams. Chris Williams, Shastari Gamble. Madam Chair, that concludes my list.
Okay, so we're going to move forward with the, uh, last two announcements. Um, we have a proclamation that we're going to read. Proclamation twenty-two oh one to recognize and honor Antonio Talaferro. For his exemplary service to the District of Columbia Housing Authority. Whereas Antonio Talaferro is a DC native and moved into public housing in April two, twenty-eleven. And whereas upon into moving into public housing. Antonio Talaferro began in his capacity of secretary on the Resident Council Executive Board. At Claret for a number of years. In October twenty eighteen, Antonio Talaferro was elected by the residents of senior and disabled communities. And was sworn in to serve the Senior Disabled Commission. And has served with dedication. And whereas he describes himself as determined, very strong willed and dedicated to the work of improving the quality of life for all residents. And whereas Antonio Talaferro has advocated for residents who had felt their voice was not heard, their needs and helped. To bridge the gap between the residents and management. Whereas he often toured the senior disabled properties, talking to residents and directly with staff. To keep an open dialogue with the executive director to voice concerns on their behalf. Whereas Antonio Talaferro has ably served as a member of the DCHA Committee on Operations. And Committee on Resident Services Initiatives. And whereas Tony, Antonio Talaferro is continuing to serve his community by serving at the Resident Council President. For the Sibley Plaza Senior. And now therefore be it proclaimed that the DCHA Board of Commissioners through adoption of this proclamation. To recognize and sincerely thank Antonio Talaferro for his tenacity and diligent support. To the senior and disabled residents of the District of Columbia Housing Authority. And the work that has, that DCHA does for its residents. Adopted by the Board of Commissioners and signed today by myself, Chairperson, uh, Dion Bussie Reader. And the Executive Director Donald, Brenda Donald. Thank you again, Mr. Talaferro, for all of your service to us. And I would also like to, before we close, even though we're going to have a wonderful event to honor Commissioner Van Gosri. I wanted to personally, again, like I did on her commission, her committee meeting earlier this month. We may not always agree on things, but I've always respected and honored you as a leader in this city. A person who personally walked me around in the community to get me, get me to understand all of the issues that pertain to the residents. And how I had to work on behalf of people, even though I may not have been in those conditions. Not only have you educated me personally on public housing issues, but just educated me on issues around this city. As a resident, as long as you've been here. So again, thank you for your years of service, thank you for, um, our conversations. And I believe iron sharpens iron, so there's never an issue between you and I when we're talking. We may not agree on everything, but our goal at the end of the day is to support the residents of the District of Columbia and get what's best for them. So thank you, Commissioner Aquarius, for all you've done and what you'll continue to do throughout your work, supporting the residents throughout the city. And the District of Columbia, so again, thank you. And with that being said, I think our meeting is at its close.
No, it's not, because I'm going to say this.
Please.
I'm going to say this in regards to Commissioner Talaferro. To Commissioner Talaferro. I never knew you was one of my family members until Afeni Muhammad. Who was a part of a Rossi Dune, Feed the Hood, who took place in Potomac Gardens. And there was a death in the family. And that's when I met Commissioner Talaferro at a funeral. That's what it was called then. And from that day on, I always remove or refuse myself from his situation. But Commissioner Talaferro was a mover and a shaker when it came to security. Commissioner Talaferro always was, I'm serious, he was always going into, um. Anybody's community that had security in it. He was thorough, his family is thorough. It's a very thorough family in the District of Columbia community. Commissioner Talaferro, and I'm serious what I did to him. He was always calling Commissioner Counsel and I told him straight up. Yeah, I'm, I don't play games, you calling Commissioner Counsel, so don't be calling me, because I don't play no games. And I'm, I'm serious about this with me. I don't play no games with the District of Columbia Housing Authority or the District of Columbia. Because I was married to Ali Ghosri from Iran. And I'm in your public housing community. And Ali ain't never even know I was in his public housing community. And I'm not playing games with you or nobody else as I leave out this door. I am real in this community. My mother worked for HUD. She brought her work home. And we was under her rules and regulations. And I've been a thorough broad on this boy. And I want to say this to everybody as I leave this board, I don't owe nobody nothing. I have served you well. I've served you with integrity. I've served you with conditions and I ain't a broad for you to play with. I came out of Chinatown. And I know rules and regulations. And I'll be your worst enemy when I leave the board, because I was your best enemy on the board. I tell the chair, everybody who done listened to in HUD. Adrian did not leave us broke. Until this housing authority bring your assistant to your boy. And explain to you who she was, who we were. I'm done, because I've done my job to all y'all. And I'm gonna tell you now, the next time you hear from me, you'll pay. Because you couldn't understand when I gave you the information for free. No, you're not going to shut me up. Because I'm gonna tell you, you need to hear from HUD. HUD is not your enemy, Adrian was not your enemy. So if you're a housing authority, and I'm serious about this. Adrian came from your housing authority. Went to NARO. Your chair don't even have information from NARO, nor do your director. That's the industry that governs you from Congress. If you think that I ain't serving you on this board, guess what? I'm gonna tell you, I am going to serve you. I'm gonna serve you this way. Since you couldn't listen to me while I was on the board, you'll pay me when I'm on. But that's the only way y'all understand. And I'm going to live in my public housing community, seven hundred twelfth street southeast. Who told Adrian about having a high rising rat? Who Brenda is trying to figure out how to do Mario's job? And guess what, I said I got Mario back, but guess what, I ain't no sellout for nobody. Because you better know who I am and who we are. You have Muslims in your community and we can't even benefit from your. Like, you know what, no Dion, you better thank me after this, you have Muslims. And we can't benefit from your services, but we cover. Here's the difference about me. They call me a fake Muslim. I cover and I uncover, but guess what? Chuck me out, Dion. You the chair. I'm a registered Muslim with the Islamic Center. That's who I am. And guess what? There's many of us Muslims who cover. And guess what? We are humiliated in your community.
Thank you.
And I've been doing that for seventeen years and nobody care about it. But Commissioner Slager, a white man, understand I am a Muslim from the Islamic Center. Why you got your head hanging like what? I'm out.
Thank you, Commissioner Bengosri.
Thank you. You're right.
Um, before we conclude, I want to, um, welcome our newest commissioner to our commission. I did not give her an opportunity earlier. We wanted to get through the business, but I want to welcome Ms. Janet Parker, who is our new commissioner representing our senior and disabled population. Ms. Janet, would you like to give a few words? She's your very first meeting.
Yes. Well, thank you all for coming. I listened with great interest to everything that was shared in this meeting and the other meetings before. I want to thank Aquarius for her many years of service and for the other commissioners for their many years of service. I, uh, hope to be able to, um, take an effort to fill your shoes. I know I won't be able to fully because I know so many of you have skills, expertise and knowledge of our residents that, uh, I have yet to learn. So, um, I look forward to being instructed and learn a lot from you all. And I do hope that Aquarius, if you're still on the, I can't see whether you're still on, uh, you will share your knowledge with me because there are many things that you are doing I'm very interested in. So, um, I thank you all.
Thank you again, Commissioner Parker. We appreciate you joining us. Um, final announcement, the next border commissioner meetings will be held Wednesday, May eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two at one PM, again via Webex, um, and all of our other streaming sites. Our meeting is adjourned at four oh seven PM. Thank you.